Okay, if I may have your attention, we'd like to welcome each one of you here tonight. Tonight is December the 5th, and this is our regular scheduled meeting, Board of Commissioners. And as always, we'd like to start out with a prayer and a pledge. So tonight, we're going to have Commissioner Ellis to lead us in our prayer, and Vice Chair Walker will lead us in our pledge.
Stand. While we come to you tonight, just gracious, that we're so thankful that you thought about us in sending your son in our wrongdoings. We'd like to thank you for this time. Love seeing the group here tonight, and we hope that the discussion here about our county is pleasing to you. We do ask for your guidance in our individual lives and help us do and say what we need to, to help support your kingdom. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. This pledge, I'm teaching salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Your motion, we approve the minutes?
Same.
Same.
Motion second, the end discussion. All in favor, say aye. Approval for the agenda.
Ms. Chair, make a motion, we approve the agenda. There's no other additions or deletions by staff.
Same.
Would like to add a couple of items, Mr. Chairman. One, you asked last month to revisit the 150th anniversary for Old Fort. There was a funding request, so I have more information to talk about that, as well as a city council request related to Interstate 40 and the bypass. And we could do those in our administrative items, if you feel like that added under item A.
What's the pleasure of the board putting that under administrative items?
I go ahead and amend the motion to include the two items that's presented by staff.
Same.
Motion second, end of discussion. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Under appointments tonight, the item A is the selection of the chair and vice chair for the Board of Commissioners. So at this time, we'll open the nomination floor up for that.
So pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 153A39, the Board of Commissioners at the first regular meeting in December shall choose one of its members as chairman for the ensuing year. The chairman is the presiding officer of the Board of Commissioners. Unless excused by rule of the Board, the presiding officer has the duty to vote on any question before the Board, but he has no right to break a tie vote in which he participated. The newly elected chairman will preside over the remainder of the meeting, and I will now take nominations for chair.
Madam Clerk, I'll make a motion for Tony Brown to be chairman.
Move nomination cease.
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Okay.
For the, sorry, the election of vice chairman, North Carolina General Statute 153A39 also requires that the Board elect a vice chairman from among its members to serve for the ensuing year. The vice chairman's duties will be to act in the absence or disability of the chairman, and I will now take nominations for vice chair.
Nominate David Walker.
Move nomination cease.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, item B, Human Resource Policy Update, and Ms. Anna Lee is here to present that.
Good evening. As per the request of the county commissioners, the Personnel Policy Manual has been reviewed, reformatted, and includes recommended edits to update outdated policies. This will assist in allowing a cohesive and clear understanding of expectations from all McDowell County employees. In the Table of Content section, there's a total of 22 policies to review based on outdated verbiage, updated procedures, and the need for additional information, but tonight I will only highlight a few of those major policy changes. In Article III, Section 10, Overtime Pay Provisions, this would be a new policy that outlines applicable overtime pay provisions in accordance with the Fair Labor Standards Act. Its intention is to assure compliance in regard to overtime for all exempt, non-exempt, and law enforcement, non-exempt employees. Under this, there is a subcategory for comp time. Currently, each employee can carry a maximum of 200 hours of compensatory time, and any additional time over 200 hours is paid out to employees at their hourly rate. The requested change for this policy would be to lower the amount of comp time each employee can carry from 200 hours to 80 hours within their assigned department. If an employee transfers departments, they would be paid out their total amount of comp time accrued and would not be permitted to carry over this time into the new department. This will allow departments to keep from paying out employees when they leave the county for comp time accrued within another department. This eliminates unexpected departmental budget expense and decreases liability for county The second one is in Article IV, this is Section 411. This is separation from employment with McDowell County. This would be an addition. Under resignation, there is a minimum requirement of a two weeks written notice. That's to be expected for all resigning personnel. However, in the updates, we're requesting an addition under the resignation requirements to add a subsection for department directors and senior level management. This would require any department director and/or senior level management, such as supervisors, to provide a minimum of a 30-day notice of the intent to terminate their employment with the county, and this would help facilitate a smooth transition for department staff, management, and human resources. Article VI, Under Conditions of Employment, we would like to add Section 606, Expectations of Ethical Conduct. This outlines the expectations of behavior of all employees within the county to all staff, supervisors, and citizens of McDowell County. Also in this section, the request by the county commissioners to review and recommend an addition of a county dress code policy is outlined below in the policy manual. This dress code policy is a flexible policy that provides general dress guidelines, exceptions to dress code, departmental flexibility, and general hygiene expectations for all employees, and it also states measures that are taken in violation of this policy applicable to all employees. Lastly, Article VII, With Leaves of Absence, Section 704, Family and Medical Leave, this would be an update. There's a request to update our current policy for retention and recruitment purposes to allow all employees to be provided up to 12 weeks of unpaid job protected leave for FMLA. Our current policy states employees that are married to another employee within the county are limited to a combined total of 12 weeks. However, the request to change this for each employee would be all employees would be eligible for 12 weeks without combined in time. So those are the highlights of the policy manual. You have any questions or concerns with those?
One question, as you went through these, is this sort of consistent with what other counties are doing now?
Yes, this is matched with Buncombe and Burke Counties' policy manual.
Okay.
I would like to make one comment. I have reviewed those changes, and I suppose that, my feeling is that we need to say some stuff upfront, that if we take the time to update our policy manual, then we expect our supervisors and department heads to adhere to those policies. And I'm going to use this for an example. Let's just go to the dress code. We need our employees to look professional, to conduct themselves professional, and we don't need to get two or three days into the week before we speak to an employee about any policy that they are not adhering to.
Correct. I agree with that.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. We have all been reviewing the policies and the policy changes, current and changes as well, and we will be looking at those and voting on those at a later date, so no action required tonight, but thank you very much for bringing it to us.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is item C, Animal Services Update, and tonight we have Ms. Brittany Wright with us, as well as Gary Stroud, and we're going to give Brittany the floor.
Okay, so tonight I am here to talk about a program that we would like to start for our elementary school age kids, fourth graders specifically, for pet ownership responsibility. What we'd like to do, our focus of that program, would be to educate that age group, fourth graders, in every county elementary school about how to be a responsible pet owner, what that means. We would be talking about spaying and neutering, you know, helping to curb, you know, pet overpopulation, having healthy and safe pets, being safe around cats and dogs. Cats and dogs are our focus for this, just to be specific, you know, and providing for that animal for their entire life. An animal is a 15-year commitment, at least, 15 to 20, and you take care of your animal, you know, for the span of its life. We'd also talk about animal advocacy, and, you know, what we can do in our communities to help, and also careers for working with animals. So I have spoke with a lady that heads a program in Wake County called Kids for Critters. It's a nonprofit organization, and they go into schools. It's a six-week program, about 45 to 55 minutes long, once a week for six weeks, and they go in with fourth graders. The curriculum is already created, so we wouldn't be reinventing the will and having to start from scratch, and they have agreed that we could use their materials and resources, and basically their program, for no charge. I mean, we would have to print materials and things like that to use in the classroom, but we would not be paying for the curriculum, but we can't alter anything, and we have to give all credit where credit is due, obviously. But I would need to, of course, get with the director in the elementary schools about, you know, is this approved by you? This is a state-approved curriculum, though, so it has been, you know, approved, that it meets state standards and guidelines for fourth graders. There's, they have math, they have science, they have reading, they have social studies, so they've got something, and, you know, it can be a true educational experience for the kids. Any questions?
Assuming you have talked to the local schools?
I have, I have met with some members of the school board and some other members of the interim superintendent, so we've talked about this, and we've talked about the time that it would take in the class, you know, what we were looking for, you know, the 45 to 55 minutes, but we have got to go further and actually, you know, and sit down and discuss, and of course, they would have to review the material as well.
Sure, I think that this is excellent. I think it's very good to educate all kids coming up. I do think it's going to help us out long-term.
Right. Yeah. Got to start.
And your estimate, it's going to be less than 500 bucks?
I would say yes, because we're not paying for the curriculum. We would just be printing materials. Now, that doesn't, after speaking with her, I don't think that this is something that Taylor and I can just do on our own. We're going to have to have some volunteers to help with it, but it's going into the schools, so volunteers would have to have background checks. You know, it would have to be, we would all, we would have to make sure we're teaching the same thing. I mean, we may not say everything the exact same way, but we are teaching the same thing. So, but I would be asking for volunteers, not paid help for that, but I would, I would say yes.
I would declare Patrick's a great, a great program, and you sort of reviewed it, and just excited about the potential to help educate the public. And like you said, it's a lifetime, well, a 15 to 20-year commitment when you take the responsibility of being a pet owner, and that's a big deal.
We brought her in and let her speak to the Education Committee meeting just a couple weeks ago, and so there was members of the school board, as well as the college there, and it went over very well. Listen, I'm all in, I think the board's all in on what we need to do to help out here.
I'll make a motion to support the school-based program, and go ahead and continue, and if the finances are more than $500, for her to address it with our county manager.
Second. Motion and a second. And if you need any kind of letter or anything from the board, we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
I have a question. You say this is already a state-approved curriculum?
It is approved for the, it's the curriculum, how they use what they have, the resources for the math and science, like the worksheets or the activities that they have are in line with the curriculum. They're approved by the state to be in line with the curriculum that is in place already.
The Kids for Critters specific program?
Yes.
Who was it written by?
I do not know the answer to who it was written by, but I do have, I can get that information.
And I'm going to ask Patrick, when we were on the school board, I remember a situation came up where we were going to be using a program, and to come to find out, that program, the original producers of that program would license each place, so I don't want us to run into a situation where we think we're getting a program, then we have to be licensed, and it costs us a bunch of money.
Right, I don't think that's, that's going to be the case, because Kids for Critters is a nonprofit organization, so I don't, I don't think that that will be the case. And from what I've talked, because she had to meet with her board and get approval for us to use it, period, but there was, she said there would be no charge for it.
I'm in favor, I just want to make sure.
And we'll make sure, yeah, yeah, before we, you know, we would not, yeah, we'll make sure of that.
Okay.
And that's a good question for me to ask, because I wouldn't have known to ask that.
We've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Ms. Chair, I do want to add that McDowell County is very fortunate to have such a dedicated group of volunteers who help and come in to our facility here, and I'd say, Brittany, without these volunteers and without these groups, local groups, your job would be a lot more difficult.
Oh, yeah.
And hard to get.
It would be close to impossible.
So if anybody is in this room, our board says thank you for all y'all do.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Can I speak on this issue? Thank, thank.
You'll have to speak in the public comments toward the end of the meeting.
Well, it's about the, what the proposal this woman just brought up. We've been, we did that for six years, and it ended at the pandemic, and there are people who were teaching it in every grammar school in the county, and it was very successful. And every school okayed it, and it was fourth graders, and it was called PREP, Pet Responsibility Education Program, and it was formed by a group in Moore County, I believe, and we went there for their meetings and learned all about it, and we carried it out very successfully.
The board has already said that they were behind her in this.
Yeah, but we have, we have all the equipment and the ideas, and it was already in play here, so I'd be glad to help you.
Okay. If you would just get with her, then.
Yeah, you can email.
Thank you, okay. Here.
Well, I know most of you, and I think most of you know me, but I'm Gary Stroud, and I've been a resident of the county since 1964, when my family moved back here from Florida. And both my father and mother were born in this county and raised here, so McDowell County is a passion for me, and I'm currently a retired part-time farmer, and also I do a lot of volunteer work, and when I retired in 2014, it gave me an opportunity to start doing some volunteer work in the county. And it's certainly an education to see what the needs are in this county, and tonight I'm here to talk about, I'm here representing animal advocates of McDowell County, and if you are here supporting animal advocates in the county, would you please raise your hand?
Here we are!
And thank you for showing up. I have given you, with the help of a lot of these people, kind of the synopsis of some things that these people behind me are doing, and have been doing for years and years, and I'm not really going into any of that at this point, because these people are very passionate about animals and what we need to do to help take care of them. And I'm here to really make two considerations for things that we would like some help from the county and the city going forward. We're doing a whole lot now, but we need some help, and we're looking for two specific things. First, I think you're already kind of involved in. It's my understanding and talking to some of you guys that there is some thought process of expansion of the current animal shelter, and I know you're working on some different proposals at that, to get that done. And I want you to know that this group supports your efforts in that area. We know it's not an easy thing, but we know that the current shelter, which operates as a managed intake with tremendous quality people that are running it.
We agree with that statement.
Yeah, very, I mean, just absolutely outstanding people doing the job there. And with a managed intake shelter, we have a challenge now, and the last four months have probably shown that challenge as much as anything, when we have had to have a situation to where we're full, and we can't take anymore animals, no matter who finds them, where they find them, we turn to animal advocate groups, and we try to say, "Help us," and they have to say, "We're full as well." And this is a really tough thing for me to say, but the answer that has been coming to the good Samaritans who find these animals that are in distress, will take them back where you found them. Now, that's not an answer that's satisfactory to any of us, I'm sure. And so, an expansion of the shelter, a movement to get it larger, to have a bigger capacity to be able to do things, is very much needed. One of the groups, I'm going to mention a name, Rusty's Legacy, and Whitney, Brittany shared this with me, since the pandemic started and lockdown started, have transported more than 6,000 dogs and 2,000 cats up to the Northeast and into Canada for adoption, where there's a tremendous shortage of animals. Those two things, what I just said about what we're having to say to a good Samaritan that finds an animal, and what we're having to do to get homes for animals, shows right up front that we really have a challenge, and that the current shelter, while it's tremendously manned with great people, is really not adequate for the situation we have here in McDowell County. And so I wanted you to know, we support you and what you're doing to try to rectify this problem on the shelter. And our second initiative that we would like to bring up to you tonight is something I don't think any of the animal advocate groups has ever done before, but we're asking for some financial help. None of the money is being asked, that we're asking for, is to go to a single advocate group. The money that we're requesting, or this new program that we're requesting, goes directly to the citizens of McDowell County for spay and neutering animals. Now, that's, that's what I want to make sure you understand. We're not asking for support of some of the things we're already doing. We intend to continue to do that, but we're asking for help with a new program. There is a program by the state, the state funds, to support, it's administered through DSS, to spay and neuter animals if you reach a certain level of poverty level, and that's in place. It's challenging for individuals even now to get qualified for that, and it depends on how many peoples in your household and stuff, but it's still a challenge, and DSS is administering that, and that's a difficult situation itself. But what we're talking about is really, how do we handle getting animals spayed and neutered that fall above that line that the DSS is doing, and then up to what individuals go and go to a vet or go to a private area and get their animals spayed or neutered? It actually costs, right now, between $200 and $400 to take your animal to a local veterinarian and have them spayed or neutered, cat or adult, depending on the size cat, the breed, lots of different things, or the dog. That's how much people are having to spend. And we have a gap or a place here between what DSS is approving and what other people can afford to get animals, get owners, citizens of McDowell County, some help in getting these animals taken care of. The advocate group of people have done a lot of work to get the cost down on spay and neuter. And stopping unwanted births is the key to keeping shelter, our shelter, from being overwhelmed, and our advocate groups from being, the rescues from being overwhelmed. So if we can prevent unwanted births, we can make a huge difference going forward. Last year, over 1,000 animals were altered in this county through the different rescues and our shelter, and that's a tremendous number in itself. We're not asking to force anyone to spay or neuter their animal, and we're not interested in trying to make someone do something they don't want to do. We're trying to get funding for people who truly want to be responsible as pet owners, but simply can't afford the $200 to $400 expense that they're having to pay to get an animal taken care of and altered, where they don't have that problem of multiple letters going forward. litters going forward. We wanted to be real specific. I went to each one of these groups myself, spoke with their leaders, the people that are the kind of leaders of these groups, to try to get consensus of what we could do. We felt we could easily do 300 animals, more than we're currently doing right now, in addition to what has been done in this last year. Would be no problem with adding another 300. We're asking the county and the city, because we don't want to leave this all on the county, to consider funding 300 extra spay-neuters at $65, not 200 or 400, but at $65, which is a reduced price that we've been able to negotiate with a local veterinarian, but also with some of the other nationwide groups in Hickory and Asheville. We're transporting right now to Bristol, Tennessee, to get animals spayed or neutered. That's what the groups are doing currently. We're not asking for anything other than the money that it takes to spay or neuter these animals. In addition to the, that number comes to $19,500. Now, that's a big number, and yet it's a small number. Gets to be a real small number when I share with you something just in a moment. But first off, there's also a private donation, that if the county and the city will do this, of another $5,500 that is going to be made forward to make this a $25,000 pool of funds. So we have private interest in this. We have sweat interest in this, as you see behind me. And we would love the support of the county and the city to make this happen.
Gary, quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
So the 19-5 doing 300 more animals per year, and you're looking to have the city, county participate, which is, I think, very reasonable in the request. So are you saying 10,000 from the city and 10,000 from the county, or are you saying not?
I'm just asking you all, I understand that you guys work together, and I'm asking you to consider coming together with the city and work out a fair and equitable amount, and not 20,000, you know, give us the 19-5 if you can. And we have $5,500 to go on top of that, which would allow us to spay and neuter next year an extra 385 animals. Now, the one little sheet that you do have is a pyramid in the packet that I handed out, it's a little colored pyramid. One animal spayed and neutered, not 385, but one animal spayed and neutered in four years turns into 2,000. This is an exponential growth of litter. So that four-year period, and I know that thing goes way higher than four years, I'm not asking you to look at that. Those numbers are too far, hard to even look at. But if you look at those 2,000 animals, and if you'll notice, I'm using a smaller number, not the number that's on that chart, if you multiply that times 385 in those same four years, that's 770,000 births that are prevented. Now, that seems like a really good value when you all are looking at the first initiative that I asked you about, which is the shelter. If we can get more animals altered, we can make a huge difference in what our needs are going to be going forward as a county or shelter.
Let me do a short rewind for just a second. Let's go back to the DSS part.
Yes, sir.
That you say is, there's already state funding there through DSS.
That's right.
What hurdles do you face in trying to get that done through DSS?
First off, one of the limiting factors is what was considered poverty has been lowered over the past few years, but if I can pull up one email here just a second.
If I could comment, when the program started, it wasn't the federal poverty guidelines, it was over the federal poverty guidelines, it was 300% wasn't it? So almost anybody in this county qualified, almost anybody, literally. But now, it is at federal poverty guidelines, because there was an explosion of interest. There were people that lined up outside of DSS and on the day they get allowed. So that, now that it's decreased so far, you know, it is difficult for people, it's right at federal poverty guideline, or if you qualify for any benefits, such as EBT or Medicaid, so that, those are the qualifying factors. But that is why it's more difficult, and it's limited to pets per household. And as I'm sure anybody could tell you, is that there, in some households, there's a much greater need than that, because it's already started, and they've got six that need to be done.
Let me ask the county manager a question. Would this number change based on the tier of the county?
No, the 100 is set by state statute for all tier levels across the state.
Okay.
The, I will address, while he's maybe looking up something, the, we have a policy that's been in place for quite a while. So you have the state statute that's based on the income, but we also have a cap of 100 procedures per quarter, and we've not hit that in a very long time, but we do have a two-animal-per-year limit that's been in place. And that was set up, again, when the program was a little more freely available, to be fair to folks, where they didn't have, bring in 10 animals at a time, and someone didn't get a chance, but that's a limitation that's been imposed locally.
And we have had, and this is not, it's not your responsibility, but, you know, people have gone up there, have really had a struggle trying to communicate with the people at DSS. We're, one other part of our proposal is to have this administered through our shelter, and I've talked with Brittany about that. And there needs to be criteria, there needs to be worked out between, you know, commissioners and the city, and maybe some of the groups, and we're certainly supportive of that, but we know there's a need. And this is what we're requesting. We're requesting money, but we're also trying to show you that there's a super need here. And I appreciate your time, be happy to try to answer any further questions that you have.
I'd like to go back to the, now, the request you were making was, was that, that was $25,000 or $20,000 from the county and the city?
$19,500. 300 at $65 per procedure is $19,500. It's what we're requesting from the county and the city. We have a private donor that's willing to give $5,500 more to make this amount of money we have to work from, $25,000. With $25,000, without much money, we can spay and neuter a minimum of an extra 385.
I think this board would like to do something, and...
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that, based on just information received, that the board can, that the board currently, right now, interest off the ARPA funding, Mr. Whitney sits at $46,000, right?
That's right.
So that would be a revenue that is in place, that could be drawn down from. So I would, I would say that in this motion that...
Matching with the...
I would say 300 at the 19-5, and have the money come from the interest from the ARPA fund that's accumulating interest, and then encourage our good friends from the city to see what they can do. Naturally, though, this is mainly probably, more so, I would say, since we have an animal control program, the weight of the responsibility comes to us, I would say, ultimately, in this thing. But I think the encourage the city to whatever amount they could do would be very, very fair, and it'd be great, have you presented to the city council yet, Gary?
We were gonna present it to you folks first, and then that's our next part.
Okay, well, we'll give you something to take up there, if the board so desires to. I will make that form a motion.
I'll say...
Okay.
Any other discussion?
So I'm clear, that's 19-5 from the county's ARPA.
Yes, sir. We just take it from a revenue sitting there.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Is Jerry Aldrich here tonight?
She's transporting.
Okay, I just wanted to recognize her, too, for all the good work she does.
Mr. Chairman, since there's three groups that we, that Gary's contacted, would it be all right, Mr. Chairman, we have the, each of the, who you're affiliated with, the three groups, recognize the groups, and who's a member of that group, and them stand up as a group individual?
Absolutely. Would one individual stand up and introduce and recognize?
Have any people over here from Mercy? Pause and pause. Pause and pause.
I've been working with Carol, like, a while.
Right after dark, so...
I've been working with Rusty's.
We don't love all the work you guys are doing, we appreciate it, but...
I'm making a motion, we have a brief recess.
Okay. Second, all in favor? All right. Okay, we'll get our meeting back in order again, and go to Item D on our agenda, which is the Old Ford Park Grant Proposal, and we've got Ms. Carol Price here to present that.
Well, you guys got me all motion, I'll thank you for that, as the proud mother of a adopted pet from Mercy Conns, I appreciate that as well.
I have some good news to share with you before I turn this over to Tim Johnson with Destination by Design. I just kind of wanted to give you a little wrap-up with tourism, since we just finished our fiscal year recently. Visitor spending in McDowell County, according to the North Carolina Department of Commerce's numbers, increased again, and it increased by 43% over prior year. And there was $23.42 million spent in McDowell County by tourists last year. I think some of these things, you know, were taking place. We have a great rural position in western North Carolina. It's really a significant motivator for people that are both in-state and out-of-state visitors to McDowell County. The demand for tiny homes just keeps growing, the short-term vacation rental market just keeps growing, and it really has had a significant and positive impact on occupancy tax revenue. So, you know, the public's interest in all the outdoor recreation expansions that we've seen, the visitor numbers obviously are going up. But one thing I was looking at, too, recently, was our traditional visitor, the visitor who comes from the parkway, the visitor who still calls in and wants to see some printed material mailed to them. Their request this year over prior year was a 62% increase in people who made online requests and wanted that print material mailed to them. So we're still cranking out printing materials. As you know, we invested heavily in creating the Tourism Authority Strategic Plan. A lot of partnerships have been created because of that, and we promised to be a financial partner to help with some matching monies on those projects that were identified. So recently, the board approved $390,000 as matching funds to some additional projects that were identified previously. So what they just approved was $15,000 to match Rutherford County's $15,000 going to the Wilderness Gateway Trail, to do the planning for a nine-mile section that goes along our borders there that we shared in the southern part of the county. Another $25,000 for the archaeological study, that's going to be in the Box Creek portion of the Gateway Wilderness Trail, so 25K for that. They also approved an additional $50,000 to go towards the construction of the Old Ford Catawba Avenue Streetscape Project. That's in addition to the $100,000 they had already allocated that we've been using for engineering and surveying work, the survey was just received recently, and that's supplementing the $900,000 NC Commerce Grant that the town of Old Ford received for that same streetscape project. They also approved $50,000 for funds to be used for the Old Ford Fanaflora State Park Trailhead Entrance Road, because that piece of property just recently closed, and the town holds the title to that property, so that will help with road construction. The city of Marion is also going to receive another $100,000 to be used towards two projects. That's in addition to monies already committed to the Pevon Trail, and the $30,000 that we've spent on the Phillips Landing Project. And I'm actually going to announce the specifics of that tomorrow night when I do their presentation. And then we also approved $100,000 for the G5 Trail Collective to be used for the new Bernard Mountain Trail, that'll also be there in Old Ford. So we're here tonight to talk about the Old Ford Mill Creek Park that's owned by Mill Creek Properties, and that was one of our strategic planning projects that was identified in the plan. That project has come together through partnerships, you guys know partnerships work. So Mill Creek Properties, the G5 Trail Collective, Eagle Market Streets Development Nonprofit, and the Tourism Authority are the partners in the project so far. So we know that a park needs maintenance, and Jason McDougall, who's here tonight representing the G5 Trail Collective, has agreed to provide that park maintenance, so that was really good news. Stephanie Sweepsen Twitty is also here with us tonight. Mill Creek Properties recently entered into a 20-year lease agreement with Eagle Street as the nonprofit partner. So Stephanie and her organization will manage the site, be an active partner in the park's development, and with grant applications, you know, construction as we go forward. So the Tourism Authority is providing $50,000 for the next phase of the park project, and those are going to be matching monies for stream bank stabilization and revitalization that goes along the side of that property. And that's why we have Tim Johnson here, Tim's with Destination by Design that we have on retainer, working with us on so many of these projects. So before I turn it over to him, does anybody have any questions?
One question.
Sure.
And I probably missed what you said in the very beginning, but did you say that visitor spending increased 43%?
I did.
Over last year?
Over last year. Yeah, that was just in one ear. Yeah, sure did. Anybody else? Okay, Tim Johnson is going to do the presentation for us.
Good evening, Commissioners. So this is relatively quick, so you are, I think all of you are pretty familiar with McDowell Tourism Master Plan that was completed last year. As Carol mentioned, this is a project that was identified in that planning process. So real quick, we all know where Old Ford is, just west of Marion, right before you start up the mountain to go to Buncombe County. As part of that Tourism Master Plan, we did create a streetscape plan for Main Street and Catawba Avenue there in Old Ford. You'll notice there's the big green patch there in the middle, that is Mill Creek Park. This is an aerial view here, looking south towards 40 from Main Street, and again, you can see the proposed Mill Creek Park site is there, just south of Hillman's. And this is a sort of a closer, you know, a zoom-in to that property and what would be included. So some of the key features for this park would be a market pavilion, which is basically a covered area that vehicles could back up underneath, and they could do farmer's market, you could put picnic tables under there for, as a picnic shelter, it would have multiple uses. A path of some sort, asphalt or possibly screenings that goes around the park there. There'd be a large open green in the middle of the park, benches, a bridge connector going over to the parking lot behind Hillman Beer, and so folks would be able to access the park from there, as opposed to coming back on Catawba Avenue and coming down the sidewalk. There'd be a small parking lot, sidewalks, signage, and landscaping. And then we would also do a stream restoration on Mill Creek, which is the creek that flows between Hillman Beer and the park. Some of the items, you know, again, that you'll see there, these are some examples. So in the upper left, that's what we call a market... So in the upper left, that's what we call a market pavilion, that covered area I was telling you about. There'd also be signage, a paved path or a path of screenings there at the park as well, stream restorations, and then that open green. Now, the plan that I just showed you is basically a concept plan. It's something that was put together for the purpose of the Tourism Master Plan. But now, as we get further along, we need to really hone in on what exactly we want with that park and what it's going to look like. Based on the concept plan, this is a budget for the entire park. Okay? The thing I want you to focus on here is that engineering for this, which is approximately 15% of the subtotal of the work above, is around $100,000. So as part of this, the TDA has reached out to Destination by Design to ask if we'd be willing to do planning and engineering for this. And as a way to acquire that $100,000 for that step, there is something called the North Carolina Water Resources Development Grant. We've already spoken with the program administrator for this grant. He feels like this is a great project from a planning perspective as well as from an implementation perspective. You can see the highlights there as far as you can ask for a maximum of 200K. There's a 50% match requirement. And the due date on this application is December 30th, so the end of this month. So what we've proposed is that the county apply for a $50,000 grant from this funding source. And the McDowell County TDA is going to put up the 50% match for that. So if you approve this grant request and that grant application is submitted and funded, the next step, of course, will be implementation. And at that time, we would go back to North Carolina Water Resources Development Grant as well as other grant resources to try to get that implementation money. Are there any questions?
What's the pleasure of the board on the request?
Mr. Chairman, making a motion, we approve the grant as requested.
Second. Motion and a second on the grant request. Any discussion? All in favor of approval?
I do have a question. We're just, we're going to have to be the fiduciary for the group. And so if the grant is not funded to McDowell, then it's, we're stopping, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Good deal.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next on the agenda is item E, the Foothills Regional Commission update. And Ms. Dana Stanberry is here to make her presentation on that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm sorry I've not been out to meet all of y'all in person yet, but this is my initial board meeting tonight here, so I appreciate you having us. We have three plans that we're going to go over with you, or two plans, and then it's an overview of the council. And I'm going to speed through mine so you can get to actually what's going on today in McDowell County. Okay, here we go. So I'm not sure if you're familiar with regional councils. I'm sure most of you are. It may have been a while since someone from Foothills had been here to present. And that's not going to be the case from here on out, so. But we are one of 16 regional commissions or planning development commissions in North Carolina. We cover these four counties, McDowell, Rutherford, Polk, and Cleveland Counties. And you can see how our regions are split up. We would like very much for the prosperity zones in the state to be split up with regional councils, but that's not the way it went when they developed those. And here's just some things that we offer that I'm sure you all are aware of. We have four main program departments. We have the Area Agency on Aging. We have the Foothills Workforce Development Board, Economic and Community Development, Foothills Regional Commission's Housing Program, which is not a public housing authority, but it is a Section 8 provider. And I'm not going to read through these, but I do have some notes if you wanted to just read through it while I go over it. So our Area Agency on Aging is probably one of our heaviest-funded departments because we get federal and state money through that. And all the regional councils in North Carolina have the same funding streams. Everyone has an Area Agency on Aging. The rest of our departments, it's up in the air. We do share some services, some we don't. But just for an example of the block grant that McDowell County received just in 2022 and the services provided, including transportation, congregate meals, home-delivered meals, and in-home level aid 1 and 2. Just out of that one block grant, McDowell County received $443,527. And you had to provide a 10% match. So it's a pretty good return on investment when you're looking at that program. For our Workforce Development Board, we do operate that in all four counties. And it's been a major supporter of the McDowell Pipeline and helped to establish that. Very successful partnership in this state. We've worked with KITSPO before to help them receive the Governor's Award of Excellence in 2021. We, this past year, we've had 51 enrollments, 23 occupational skills training participants, 41 achieved measurable skills. And out of those 36 of those participants entered employment when they left the program. Your NC Work Center provides services for job seekers, training seekers, employers. And in the past couple of years, almost 2,000 individuals have received services through that NC Work Center. And there have been over 4,200 services provided to employers through our Workforce Development Board. Onto our housing program. Since 2019, approximately 175 vouchers have been issued for McDowell County. 70 new contracts have been initiated, nine of which were Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing. Other services that we have provided include negotiating rent if that's needed, processing new contracts, payroll rental, or, sorry, paying rental assistance for property owners, and counseling families that have issues with housing or property owners.
Donna, one quick question. You said negotiating rent, so what, can you elaborate on that?
I will try. So when a person that qualifies for Section 8 comes into our program and maybe they're already in a stable environment, but their rent is too high, we can actually work with the landlord and the tenant to maybe provide some negotiation on where they can lower their rent. Or if they're having a hard time, perhaps put rent off for a month and catch up at the end. So that, that kind of thing.
How much success do you have when you're working with the landlords to do that?
I can't answer that, to be honest. We have established a housing consortium. Our biggest issue right now, or biggest hindrance, is getting lack of affordable housing. You know, the market rate right now for any type of rental is astronomical, like we've never seen in this region. And so it's been very hard to find landlords that are willing to work with this group. And with our housing consortium, we hope to meet in the middle with those needs versus what our clients need. I'm going to let Alan speak on our housing consortium. Well, Alan just passed three years. Since he's here, I'm going to let him go over this. I will say that, just as a follow-up before Alan gets started, Alan's been with Foothills since the second week of July. I've been there since the first week of July. Our finance officer has been there since the first week of August. We've all had experience in this realm before. Housing is one thing I've not worked with before. I came from Landis Sky Regional Council in Asheville. I was there 16 years, but that's one area that we did not work in. But it's my goal to bring every, you know, we all have to pay taxes. It's my goal to bring all the tax dollars we can back to our region and help implement these programs, so. Alan, do you want to speak?
I'll take it away.
Sure.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice President. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. My name's Alan Tony. I'm the interim community and economic development director. So we do a lot of things, everything else at Foothills. So one of the major ones, and that's the top kind of bracket there, is we're the lead economic development association for both the EDA and the ARC, which is the Appalachian Regional Commission. So if, I know Mr. Wooten submitted an application for Appalachian Regional Commission funding for some water line extensions. So we review those, kind of give them feedback. And then our contact, Olivia Collier, we make recommendations to her saying, hey, yeah, this should be funded, or hey, no, we don't.
That's a great project too, by the way.
It is a wonderful project. I'm going to tell Olivia that tomorrow morning when we have our meeting. Yeah. No, but it is a great project. And those kinds of, hey, ARC funneling that money into water line. I worked in municipal development for about four years. I know for a fact utilities bring, and infrastructure bring jobs. So those little water line extensions, it may not be the huge, the biggest deal in the world, but hey, they bring jobs, they bring opportunity, they improve quality of life to our citizens. And those things are so, so important. So one of, some other services we provide, we do some grant writing, grant administration. So if Lake is a little too busy, we can always take that on. On top of that, we provide planning and zoning services. So right now, we do zoning administration for the town of Bullen Springs down in Cleveland County. And we're adding some communities to that. Some other things we've started to branch out into, and this is, I'll be honest with you, we are one of the few COGS in the state to offer agricultural services and farmland preservation services. So we are currently in the midst of writing a farmland preservation plan for Rutherford County. But that's a service we are wanting to expand upon. We're actually about to work with Rutherford County on a, some flooding they're having down on the Cleghorn Creek. So we are really expanding our services, really wanting to branch out into that agriculture world. There's a lot of need there, and I think in our communities. And we want to make sure that services is provided in McDowell County. Thank you, sir. On top of that, you're going to talk a little bit later tonight about the Transportation Advisory Board appointment. That's also my department. We are the role planning organization that helps determine which transportation projects get funded. So if you're lucky enough to be appointed to that board, we'll be spending lots of time together. Congratulations. But no, it's so important, you know. And in my opinion, one of the three most important things government does is infrastructure, you know, roads, utilities, that kind of stuff. And to have that voice to be able to determine, hey, this is what we want to see built. Well, we don't want to see this get built. It's really, really important. So a couple other things to add to that, that we have going on right now in McDowell County that's very exciting. We have digital inclusion planning, which we're going to talk about tonight a little bit. Has to do with broadband access, people being able to use it. I won't steal Isabel's thunder on that one. On top of that, we have two SPRs going on right now. So these are special studies funded majority through NC DOT. One of those are for the Font de Flora Trail Crawson over US 70. We're about to hopefully get started on that study to figure out how we're going to connect a trail across a five-lane highway. And then the other is a Henderson Logan Charette. That was to kind of improve that street, and that was part of the McDowell Tourism Plan. Couple of those. We talked about the water line extension for ARC. I know EDA, we're also working with McDowell Tech on their project. We kind of oversee that grant administration, make sure everything's done correctly. And finally, HUD Home Consortium. So this is kind of, this is new for our region, starting out building housing, building workforce housing for our communities. This is really important. There's a huge housing shortage in our communities. I know we were in a meeting with Dogwood Health Trust and Gateway Foundation about a month ago, you know, about a month ago now. And the housing need in our region is just massive. Between people moving, between substandard housing, between affordability issues, our housing need is huge. So this program will be able to actually put units on the ground in our communities, and that's such a huge deal. So we are, I'm waiting to get approval from HUD, the federal government. They're a little bit slower than local government. But we are waiting patiently to get that approval so that way we can get rolling and moving on that home consortium. And I'm happy to answer any questions about community and economic development while I'm here.
You brought a lot of substance in just a short period of time.
I've done this a time or two, if you can't tell.
And I'm glad to see that you understand how important water line extensions are. That's great.
Yeah, no, I, like I said, I did municipal government. And we, you know, one of the most important things we did was water and sewer line extensions. I mean, just providing that need for residents, for businesses, for industrial sites, it is.
And you understand the state, how they hand tie county government. We've got to be able to take care of the expenses out of our water fund for any expansions.
Yep.
And if you don't have the customer base, you can never do the expansions.
Nope.
So henceforth, y'all come into play.
Yep. That's where ARC, where we come into play, where EDA comes into play, to where we can connect you with those funding sources. So you can actually build up your customer base so you can continue doing those expansions. Because in all reality, if you're not growing with your utilities, a lot of times you're.
And we can't help it, we can't expand.
Yep, that's right.
We hope that you and Lake can become best friends.
Lake and I are, I don't know where he went off to. We are on fast track. Me, him, and Mr. Wooten here are fast track becoming best friends, so.
Well, you'll be our best friend if you bring us money.
Hey, that's what we're going to work on. We're going to talk a little bit about bringing in money right after this, so.
Yeah, we're all about McDowell County. I mean, I know it's a four, we're going to McDowell County be first.
You hit so many, you hit so many issues there. But we do have some farmland preservation here in the county. We'd like to do agricultural things, looking at young married couples just out of high school, trying to afford housing that they can't do it. And it's just, and with rent, they can't build assets. So there is many things, and that's not Section 8 people.
No.
That's who.
That's workforce housing.
That's correct. So we need, we need you and whomever to excel.
Yeah, no, and we're glad to be here. I know, I'm from the area, so I'm born and raised in Rutherford County. Victoria and I actually went to high school together.
Really?
So we've known each other a little while. But born and raised from the area, I want our region to be the best region it can be. And that includes McDowell County being the best it can be.
Would like to ask for updates periodically when you have things to bring to us.
Absolutely. We would love to do that, and we'll coordinate with Mr. Wooten to make sure we're coming up here regular for commissioner meetings.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do want to follow up. I have business cards with my email. I cannot answer the housing questions. I will get answers for the housing questions. And I knew the one thing I'll be asked about would be housing questions tonight. So unlike Alan, I'm not from this region. I'm from Madison County, but I still consider myself a mountain girl and.
If you're from Madison County, you're a mountain girl.
I am from, born and raised, and you know, this is a short story. It has nothing to do with this meeting. But my grandfather used to be the guidance counselor and a coach at McDowell High many, many years ago. So I have a tie, Howard Haney.
Howard Haney.
It was a long time ago. So, but he was good friends with Mr. Paul Hughes, who used to be the director at Oyster Thermal Planting Development when it was called that. So it's all funny how we all sort of, we're kind of related here. But let me give you a card just in case you do have questions. I'll be happy to answer that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure talking with y'all.
Thank you. Great, he's his father. Okay. They save the best for last, is that the case?
I guess we're about to find out.
Unfortunately, you do have to listen to me one more time.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Izzy Norman, and I'm a lead for North Carolina Fellow at the Foothills Regional Commission. I am in front of you all tonight seeking approval, seeking the board's approval of the McDowell County Digital Inclusion Plan that was prepared by the Foothills Regional Commission. First and foremost, digital inclusion refers to the activities and strategies used to ensure all individuals and communities have access to and use of information and communication technologies. The four key elements of digital inclusion include access to high-speed reliable broadband, access to affordable internet and devices, access to user-friendly devices such as computers or tablets, and lastly, access to digital literacy training. Earlier this year, the Foothills Regional Commission entered a grant agreement with the Institute for Emerging Issues at NC State University to develop digital inclusion plans for McDowell, Rutherford, and Polk Counties. This project was funded by Dogwood Health Trust to ensure that every county in their region had a digital inclusion plan with specific strategies aimed at increasing access to broadband, access to devices, and access to digital literacy opportunities. Upon completion of digital inclusion plan, $50,000 will be awarded by Dogwood Health Trust to McDowell County in 2023. By the end of 2023, an additional amount of $25,000 will be awarded, totaling $75,000. As the COVID-19 pandemic highlighted, more elements of everyday life continue to transition online. Residents of all ages need affordable broadband access, reliable devices, and basic computer skills to navigate activities like telehealth. and basic computer skills to navigate activities like telehealth, distance learning, and online work. Broadband infrastructure has become a necessity of modern life and should be treated as such moving forward. The Foothills Regional Commission worked closely with Connect McDowell, the leading nonprofit broadband coalition in the county, and additional stakeholders to address issues of broadband availability, access, and adoption. The plan today catalogs existing digital inclusion assets in the county. This includes hard assets such as broadband providers, as well as soft assets such as the people and organizations providing these crucial trainings. In addition, the plan identifies areas of need within the digital inclusion ecosystem. These findings inform the creation of specific goals and objectives. This section of the plan melds various stakeholders' perspectives in an attempt to outline a roadmap towards a more digitally inclusive McDowell. The vision statement serves as a vision for the future of the county if digital equity is attained. The mission statement outlines advocacy, collaboration, and education as the primary ways in which the vision statement will be achieved. And lastly, the values of accessibility, equity, and affordability are the primary principles underscoring the plan. The plan identifies the existing assets in McDowell County across four sections, including broadband availability, broadband adoption, access to devices, and digital literacy. I have pulled out, sorry, I have pulled out one asset from each category to highlight the digital inclusion activities already underway in the county. In regard to availability, there are nine internet service providers within the county, seven of which provide broadband to residents. When looking at pockets in need of broadband, we drew upon various sources of data, including the Federal Communications Commission, also known as the F C C, the American Community Survey, and the N C Broadband Survey. We also compared maps where broadband is reportedly provided against maps featuring more granular data from the N C Broadband Survey. This comparison revealed that actual internet speeds at residents' homes often fall under the broadband threshold of 25 megabits per second download and 3 megabits per second upload. This reality contributes to the fact that over half of McDowell survey respondents feel either somewhat or extremely dissatisfied with their internet provider. All in all, these results suggest that a large portion of residents in the county are not only unserved by internet providers, but they are also underserved and left with an often inconsistent and poor connection. The second element of digital inclusion is broadband adoption, which is closely related to broadband access and affordability. According to the information provided by internet companies to the F C C, 83% of the county has access to broadband, yet only 51% of all residents subscribe to these services. One of the contributing factors to this low adoption rate is the cost. According to the N C survey, most residents in McDowell pay over $125 a month for broadband. To help subsidize these costs, low-income households are eligible to enroll in the federal Affordable Connectivity Program, which provides a discount to eligible households of up to $30 per month towards internet service. Within the county, roughly 15% of all households are enrolled in this program, but nonetheless, the price of broadband remains a significant barrier to subscription. In regards to device access, roughly 16% of McDowell households do not have a computer device, which is often due to their costliness. Thankfully, there is an assortment of entities within the county that provide the public with computers or tablets. One notable example includes McDowell Technical Community College. In September of this year, McDowell Tech was awarded from the State Library in North Carolina, which they used to purchase 16 computers, computer bags, and a computer storage cart for their library. Because of this service, students enrolled at the college are now able to check out computers for an entire semester and continue to further their education. And last but not least, digital literacy is the ability to navigate and communicate information online. In 2021, Connect McDowell was awarded a grant to implement Project Bridge, which was a seven-session digital literacy course designed to teach parents the skills needed to participate online learning. Connect McDowell found that 69% of student households in the East Marion community lacked a reliable internet connection, making it one of the most vulnerable and disconnected pockets in the county. To ensure this population could engage in distance education, the courses were taught in both English and Spanish at Eastville Global Magnet School. And the course ended up being a huge success, with 22 people enrolling and 10 people completing it. Once the gaps in assets and needs were identified, the following goals and objectives were set. The first goal revolves around broadband availability and increasing the public's ability to access the internet in both private and public settings. The second goal focuses on increasing both the public and private's access to devices. With a lot of day-to-day activities transitioning online, ensuring that residents have a functioning computer or tablet to engage in telehealth, banking, remote work, et cetera, is essential to bridging this digital divide. And the third and final goal goes beyond access to the internet and devices, and instead focuses on ensuring that users can meaningfully engage with the technology available to them. And in conclusion, creating this plan was a necessary first step to raising awareness around digital inclusion and identifying the remaining areas that need work. Moving forward, this plan serves to guide local officials and stakeholders in prioritizing the next steps in order to make significant and sustainable progress in this realm. As the leading broadband entity in the county, Connect McDowell will continue to work diligently to address issues of broadband inclusion and digital equity. Additional stakeholders from across these public, private, and nonprofit sectors should continue to be engaged as they all share a vested interest in tackling digital inequities. Now that the plan has been created, we ask that the County Board of Commissioners move to adopt the plan in its current form. Once the plan is approved, the county should continue to work with these key partners to implement digital inclusion strategies that are in compliance with the grant agreement from Dogwood Health Trust. Thank you for allowing me to present this in front of you tonight, and if you have any questions, I'd be willing to help answer them.
Ms. Chairman, Ms. Wooton, question. I was looking that way. I'm either here. As far as direction or what's the recommendation from staff concerning this plan, is there a recommendation on that?
Recommend adopting it unless you had reservations or questions about it that needed more time. But in reviewing it, it's ready to go and ready for adoption.
Okay. Ms. Chairman, I make a motion. We go ahead and endorse, because the word was used endorse, the digital.
Approve.
Okay, well.
Adopt.
Okay. I will go ahead and make a motion that we adopt the digital inclusion plan as presented tonight.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion.
Yes. Just want to make sure when COVID came out, we do have a one-to-one here because the commissioners did work with the school board. And sixth graders on up had their computers and found out that we had over 40% of our county that could not get internet at home. And when you're talking with people 15 years old or younger, and we've talked about hotspots in the areas, that's all good. But I and we are very strong on trying to help support this from not just the children of the county if another pandemic hits, but the telemedicine and the business and all that other, as you mentioned. But very, very, very interested in this going on, and I appreciate your presentation tonight.
Thank you. Yes, it's been a pleasure. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right.
All right, me again. I apologize. I do want to thank you guys for adopting that. You know, digital inclusion is important. I'll tell you one little story about that, just to show how important it is. So a friend of mine works at the library down in Rutherford County, and he has people who come in, we're about the same age, still our age, who don't know how to fill out a job application online.
Wow.
It still happens. It's still an issue. So that level of, you know, teaching folks how to do that is very important. It does help our industry here and our economy here. But I'm going to talk a little, I'm going to change subjects a little bit to everyone's favorite topic, if you're Elon Musk, electrical, electric vehicle charging plans. So this was requested for us to do by Mr. Wooton and Mr. Boye on a joint City of Marion and McDowell County effort to figure out, hey, we know electric vehicles are coming. It's, the projections out are very strong. I know the, I'm going to show some data on that here in a second, but electric vehicles are coming, and they need places to charge. And we want to make sure, hey, they're stopping in at Marion and McDowell County to get their charge in. So one of the biggest kind of graphs, you can see the growth here, are just the current state of E Vs in McDowell County. So you would think, hey, Royal County, there's really not much interest for this. Hey, there's no way this is growing. But it is. So just from June 21st, which has a total of 58 electrical vehicles, from then to June 22nd, it's doubled almost 101 E Vs. And that's a combination of you plug in at your house, but also kind of your standalone hybrid, that kind of thing. And then you have active electric vehicle registrations in Buncombe, Burke, and Rutherford County. So we picked kind of your adjacent counties. So we have went from, I know you can't see it well, but in September of 18, that's about 750, all the way up to 2,500 as of June 22. So that growth is there. It is, we're seeing significant strides. I know the vehicle producers, I mean, they're really pushing forward with electric vehicles, electric trucks, electric cars.
Electric boats.
Electric boats. I mean, you name it, they're going to make it electric at this point. But I say that to say it is growing, the need is growing, and the charging station need is growing as well. So one thing to take into account is in 2019, the state did the North Carolina Zero Emission Vehicle Plan. So since 2019, North Carolina as a whole, so statewide, has seen a 220% growth in a number of registered electric vehicles. So that's, like I said, we're seeing it here, you know. I think everybody's seen where the Vietnamese companies coming in in Chatham County and the eastern part of the state. And when they're going to be a big E V producer, the governor's goal, the legislator's goal is for North Carolina to be a big E V hub, not only in production, but also folks driving them. So and then the amount of charging stations has grown from 400 in 2019 to over 900 as of 2022. So we've seen it double in just the span of three years.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
The DC fast chargers, is that what is proposed from McDowell County?
Yes, we're going to, I'm going to get, I'm going to show you a map and show that just.
How long does it take for a car to charge on DC fast charger?
I believe it's 30 minutes to 80% charge. Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty quick. Yeah, the fast chargers for quickness are the way to go, and that's when, the problem with the fast chargers, you have to run three-phase electric, which is very costly. So figuring out the best places to have three-phase availability, so you minimize your cost.
Do you have any good pleas on grant funding for items such as this?
Yes, we're going to talk about that. Yes, sir. Yeah, I got some good news for you on that.
Well, if you want to fast forward to that, we're.
Well, I do, I do want to show you this graph, so everybody sees the difference between the charging stations. Is everyone familiar with the different levels?
No.
No, okay. So the level one is more, you're going to go home, plug it up at the end of your day. It gets charged up, and then you put, you know, you unplug it, kind of your day-to-day commute kind of thing. Your level two, that's what you currently have in the county, like the one at the farmer's market, is level two. It takes, that one takes longer. That can take anywhere, currently, I don't know, four to six hours? Yeah, four to six hours. I had to double check with the girls who know a little bit more than I do on this. Four to six hours on the level two. But the fast charger, that's 30 minutes for a full charge on your car. Sit for 30 minutes, go eat lunch, dinner, quick lunch, dinner kind of thing, and then you're back on the road.
What kind are at the state parks?
The state parks, do they have level twos? Level twos, yep. You're seeing, we're seeing a lot of level twos, and that's just because the infrastructure cost for running level twos is so much lower than level threes. Once you start getting into running three-phase electric, it is, can be cost prohibitive.
What is the cost to the consumer to pull into one of these?
So it depends. Some places do not charge to allow you to charge your vehicle. Other places charge for parking, and recently, the general legislator just allowed cities to charge for the electric cost.
Well, somebody's got to pay for it.
Yeah.
And it ought to be the man driving the car.
And we need to.
Yes.
If it's us, we need to make sure we do that, even if it's five, six, seven dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's one thing we are recommending in the plan, and that is something I'm working with Mr. Boye and Mr. Wooton on, is kind of a cost estimate for, hey, here's how much this costs per year in terms of electric and upkeep. So that way, you guys have a general idea of how much to charge for folks to use your charging stations. Yes, sir.
If I'm getting ahead of you, you can answer the question when you.
Okay.
I see that two stations at Catawba Falls and another place are no longer in operation. What happened?
That is correct. So the one, we don't really know what happened, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, it just kind of didn't, went away one day. And then the other one, it looks like it's just not been up kept. Looks like the maintenance and upkeep on it's just not been done, and that's why it's no longer working.
That's, in my opinion, and they were free charging areas, and one is the T D A parking area.
Yes.
And the other was the Catawba River, and there has to be an upkeep cost. So one of the electrical itself, which is going to be lower two or three dollars, but then there's also going to be two or three dollars per charge to go to the upkeep.
Yeah. Yeah, that is something when you, when you and the City of Marion work out about, and in our local agreement to come together on how you guys want to handle these, because you guys can actually charge for electricity right now. General legislator won't let counties charge, but they'll let cities charge. Find that, or find that kind of interesting, but it will have to be some type of agreement between you two. I know, hey, that's, that's a question for folks in Raleigh, not, unfortunately, not when I, I'm well burst in.
Well, if they split the revenue with us and the cost, I think.
Yeah, there we go. So this is kind of just your proposed charging stations, and I'm going to walk over here just because it'll help you see. So those two on the left-hand side there are current level two chargers. So that's the one like at the farmer's market where it's other one at?
The Ingles.
The Ingles. So then what we're proposing as part of this plan for new charging stations, you've got a level three charger here.
That is at the election.
Yep, the election building. I believe this is McDowell Tech.
McDowell Tech is on the bottom. You had it reversed.
All right, elections here, McDowell Tech here.
Correct.
There we go. Sorry, I had to get my geography again.
The charging station with Ingles.
Yes, sir.
Who owns it?
Ingles.
What do they charge?
I do not know what they charge. Do you all know what they charge?
It's free.
It's free, it's free, it's free. So Ingles doesn't charge. I guess the idea for them is you come and park, and then you go in the store, and probably by the time you get out, it's charged enough after you spent a small fortune in Ingles. And then the level two is a public apartment line. Right downtown. So that's kind of the proposed locations within the City of Marion, with a partnership with McDowell County, obviously, because of the Board of Elections, and then McDowell Technical Community College. So there's three, what we've looked at, three main funding sources, and my stuff got moved down a little bit. So the big one is the NEVI program. So North Carolina, because of the bipartisan infrastructure bill, is going to receive about $110 million between 2022 and 2027. And this, the first phase of this is going to be to install level three chargers. So their goal is to have that within, I think it's a half mile of what's called the alternative fuel corridors, which Highway 40 is an alternative fuel corridor. So they're going to pay to come in, install the infrastructure, pay to put that in. So that's kind of taken care of. That would be a partnership with the R P O, the role planning organization, and N C D O T to get those installed. The next would be the Volkswagen Settlement Mitigation Program. So, you know, Volkswagen got in a little bit of trouble for lying about their emissions and not following the emission regulations. So they have a grant opportunity here, and it's more of a rebate, kind of a reimbursement program. So they'll go up to $25,000 for any one location, which may be fine for a level two. Just to be honest with you, it's not going to get you a level three, but it will cover your level two cost to install one of these. And finally, we have a new program which just started. I just got the email on it about two weeks ago. It's the North Carolina Carbon Reduction Program. So this is also part of that bipartisan infrastructure bill. Our region, which isn't Cleveland, Cleveland's not included in that, it's just McDowell, Rutherford, and Polk. We're getting 12 projects in total for what they're calling green infrastructure projects. So this can be used for charging stations, transit conversions, fleet conversions, sidewalks, trails. I have a whole sheet on different projects, but there is opportunity there for the acquisition, installation, or operation of your E V charging stations. So and that's broke down based upon populations. So we have, we get up to eight projects to submit for areas of 5,000 people or less. And then areas of 5,000 people or more, we get four projects as a region. So that doesn't mean, you know, countywide, we'll get, we'll have to kind of focus it on a region and say, hey, in the, in this area in Marion, there's. there's 4,000 people, it would qualify under the, you know, the latter, so we get a little bit more project. But those are the three main funding opportunities that we've really looked into and looked at. It's kind of, in our, in my opinion, kind of your three easiest ways to get some of these things built and installed. And I know, one thing I will say, I know electric cars are a little bit of a controversial topic, just because of, you know, how things are being pushed. But I'll tell you guys, the car industry does seem to be believing in them and moving forward with it. So the next step, so we, we're working with Ashley and Bob on cost estimates. So we, we are, we're gonna work with them, get them some really accurate and concise cost estimates, so you know what your upkeep's going to be, what your electric cost is going to be over an annual period, as well as any maintenance, that kind of stuff. So then next, for your site assessments, you have to put in a work order with Duke Energy to figure out, hey, is three-phase available here, is it not? What needs to be run, what doesn't need to be run? And then from there, it's really just kind of your typical permitting process, having the funding opportunities, and then purchasing the equipment with, with the recommended manufacturers. And we, in our plan, we do have recommended manufacturers as part of that. So now I'm happy to answer any questions about that. Yes, sir?
Let me go back to where you were talking about, the city and the county.
Yes, sir.
The city can charge, but the county cannot?
That is my understanding from reading the North Carolina General Statute, and that's our conversations with the School of Government, is for electricity, counties cannot charge to use their electricity, but cities can, municipalities can. Yes, sir?
Okay, maybe I'm, maybe I'm a little slow, but help me understand who pays for charging that vehicle?
So, so at the station, the car owner who's plugging in should pay. So you kind of just pull out your debit card, swipe it. You can pay the city for the electricity they use. It's funny how it works, but you pay the city for the electricity you use, and then the city would have an account just for, you know, that electric charging station or the line. But the owner of the car would use it. I know when I worked in Shelby, we had one right near our office. And it was, the owner of the car comes in, swipes his card, he pays to use the charging station.
Is that in the city, or is that in the county?
It's in the city. Yeah.
So if there's a charging station out in the county, we can't charge for the electricity?
You can't charge for electricity, you can't charge for the parking.
Okay.
I think your speed on this plan, and there was one area that I would like to suggest to get a level-three is in Old Fort area.
Yeah. Okay.
Because of the trails and the growth in the western part of the county.
Okay. Now, we can definitely incorporate some of those. We're not asking for any type of approval or adoption. We just wanted to make sure you guys knew what was going on. Get some of your input, so we can come back later with a more refined plan, a little bit more cost estimates to-
There are federal monies too, for each area. So the county could use something, the schools could use something.
Yep.
McDowell Tech, the city.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's, in my opinion, there's gonna be a lot of funding down the pipe for this in the next several years, just part of that, that infrastructure bill. And then some of the, some of that money's just, it's a huge amount in the state. And so there'll be plenty of money for, I think, charging stations.
Change on the throne.
Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir.
If you will remind me, when we went out to see the campground the other day, is there provision there for charging stations at our campground?
I don't think there was at this point, but with it being a Duke Energy-developed site, I would think it's something they would want to-
While they're in the process.
Probably encourage if it were then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Wood, what's, is, as far as the EV charging infrastructure presentation, is there any action being requested of the commissioners?
Not so much as far as votes, but if the plan presented as far as next steps to allow conversations to continue, again, no commitment of county dollars or so forth, but to continue to research, you know, what opportunities are there for development and grants that are out there.
I want to make a motion to go ahead and get started on the grant funding, grant applications.
Okay.
To a point. And in three months, I'd like for somebody to come back and let us know where we stand.
Okay, fantastic.
Second.
Motion second, and your discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
All right. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for allowing us to be here. And I hope you all have a good evening. If I don't see you between then and now, have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Same to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to old business, item A under old business building project. Mr. Wood?
Sure, thank you. I'll move quickly here, and it's getting late. Couple of capital items that are underway. Hit those quickly. I've mentioned you hired an architect. The firm is named CBSA, and the architect is named Marty Beal. We have met with Mr. Beal a number-
Mr. Wood, I'm having trouble hearing you. Mr. Wood, can, can the-
Please.
Go out in the lobby.
Yeah, we have a live room here, so we, we hear all the conversations. So again, we've had some initial conversations with Marty Beal, who's our architect, that has been hired to study the services building and make recommendations on how to renovate it for the mechanical systems, as well as walls and things that might have to be accommodated for the plan you endorsed some time ago to move probation parole to that building. We did meet last Wednesday with probation parole staff and Mr. Beal. And Mr. Beal is taking their program requirements, which is state statute and state administrative code, and trying to make it fit for the second floor, floor plate there. So told him to get something back as quickly as he could on that. Station one, the old EMS station on Garden Street, that is moving, it's hard to tell, but we have signed a contract or work order to remove some materials, lead pan and so forth, that were in that building. That process should start any day now to get that removed. We're still going to list the building as far as the steel structure essentially for sale, once that remediation has taken place. So we're gonna move, we are moving as fast as we can, waiting on third-party vendors there. And if you have not seen it, if you're on Garden Street, will notice the lot there beside the services building has been paved. We're waiting on dry weather to do the lines and the landscaping around it. And something, last but certainly not least, on this item, I've mentioned, you authorized an RFQ, a request for qualifications for architectural services for the DSS buildings. We had eight responses, which is a tremendous response. We're gonna meet this week to try to win that down to a recommended firm for your approval. And again, as a reminder, their program of work will be to analyze our current space utilization, look at state building code, administrative code, and so forth, and let you know what their professional recommendation would be on the facilities for that department. We're, again, we're in three different buildings. Every single space is full, and so it does present some challenges. So that's what I have under building updates.
Okay. Item B, Parks and Recreation, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. I think it was the Friday of our last meeting, Mr. Marsh and I met with our architect and his team. There were subconsultants there, being a landscape architect. The civil engineer firm was there, and maybe more importantly, the pool consultant was there, since a large part of this project does involve replacement of that swimming pool at that, at that site. We, we made it clear, Mr. Marsh and I, that the board expects this project to move. And we told the team assembled that we need to be out of the bid in mid-January on that project. And so we check in very frequently to make sure there's progress on that work. There are design drawings for the backstop of the, of the ball field. There have been drawings of the landscaping for some time. The pool item is maybe the last part to be designed. You've given a general blessing on having replaced pool and a splash pad component. And we're just gonna keep moving forward with that. If there's specifics you want to see, we can certainly bring that in with a consultant or a planner or what have you. But we want to keep trucking and give something that's gonna be enjoyable for people of all ages, but something that can last a long time.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a request that we have Patrick back with us at our, at our January meeting. Give, give a good, solid update to the board.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And the last item there is an update on our, our grant applications. We will hear, hopefully, in early spring on our playground grant for Maple Leaf. Mr. Silver and I did meet with Mr. Marsh and Mr. Kazee to review part-of-project possibilities. And so Mr. Marsh's staff, Mr. Silver and I are looking at some possibilities that might be good part-of applications, Parks and Recreation Trust Fund applications. And so we hope to have that recommendation to you in January, because we want to apply for every grant opportunity we can. So I hope to have a recommendation for you in January.
Okay, good. Mr. Marsh, would you like to say a word on, maybe a quick update on basketball season starting out, and what's going on?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity. Always a pleasure to come before the board. Congratulations, Mr. Green, sir, for your appointment, your election and appointment to the board. First season, our first day of the season was Saturday. 720-plus children, lots of moving parts. Two members of our board even have children, others have grandchildren who are involved. An amazing opportunity just to continue to service the people in the county, and more importantly, our young people. 38 games, 38 games happen on Saturday in six gymnasiums throughout the county. The relationship that has been fostered with McDowell County Schools and continue to be supported for this board is amazing. What our superintendent has done and marked before him, just a phenomenal job there. We have a great relationship. Mr. Garvin Trinks makes sure the lights on and the heat's running. And just the details that the average citizen shouldn't have to worry about, that goes into being able to make that thing happen, is phenomenal, Mr. Chairman. And so very, very pleased with the effort from my staff. The jersey, I'm only down to the little details of what the young boys and girls are wearing this year. We went out and made sure, we went out and got vendors from this county to be able to solicit bids from them to be able to put the jerseys on our little children, and they look amazing. The pride in these kids' faces, when they take a step onto that court, whether it be to cheer or shoot a basketball, something that they'll forget about later on, that little, one particular game, but they'll never forget the pride that was instilled in them through something like this. And we're just absolutely thrilled with what we're able to do. A lot to work on. My commitment to this board, to every citizen in the county is we're gonna continue to work on our processes. There's absolutely nothing that I do is perfect, but we'll continue to work on it and pray through it, and make sure that we do the best that we can in everything that we do. But, Mr. Chairman, we appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve, sir.
Well, thank you for all you do. We appreciate your hard work, and we appreciate where you've taken this, your department, and the steps that you've taken to make it a better place for our kids. We do have a little problem we're worried about. We hear that you were on the court the other night, so we don't want to lose you to the NBA.
Oh, so I was. This, there's so much sickness going on, Mr. Chairman, right now. And it's hit our referee pool. And so we needed a, we really dug deep for a referee. And so I janked my sweatshirt off and stepped on the court at Pleasant Gardens. And not too many parents fussed at me. Nobody threw tomatoes at me. So I was able to get on and off. But yes, sir, I don't intend on making that a habit, Mr. Chairman. But I like to say, lead from the front. That's what I was taught in my military career, and we'll continue to do whatever we need to to make things happen, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Marsh, I'd like to say thank you for the relationships that you're building, because you can't do it yourself. And do want to make sure, ensure that you understand we've got your back.
Thank you, sir. I do, and I appreciate it. And I don't forget it. And the prayers and support of this board, and what the county manager continues to do for me in support. I have no doubt that he supports me and that you do, and we appreciate you all very, very much.
Make sure that occasionally you take a moment to breathe.
Yes, sir. Yes, it's, I'm going on a 14-day work week, and I'm tired, but we're gonna get there, because whatever we need to do to get it up and running, and then, once we get it up and pushing in the right direction, we'll take a step back and get a little, wash a little of the dust out of our mouth. But thank you, sir.
I would like to say Saturday was great. Coached a 10 o'clock game at PG, girls' team, my daughter, she's in fourth and fifth grade. And then over at 2 o'clock at Glenwood, assistant coach for my son's team. But handing out the uniforms Thursday night to those kids, and seeing their eyes just light up when they saw those new uniforms was incredible. So something to be very proud of, and a lot of good things going on. Appreciate all your hard work.
Well, thank you, Mr. Allison. And it goes a long way, sir, to have a commissioner, I want to say that to you, supporting us from the adult league softball. I might have lost a dollar on a bet, because I had a figure that it was gonna be a hamstring you were gonna pull, but you didn't. But no, seriously, sir, appreciate your support and what you do out there for us.
Yes, sir.
I know that sometimes this can't be helped, but I would appreciate the effort if we, how am I gonna say this, don't have to have parents make a choice between church or ballgame.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So I would like to address it really quickly, if I could. I run zero programs, sir, that require anything to happen on Wednesday or Sunday. We offer an adult league that was requested by 95% of those players to occur on Sunday afternoon after 2:00 PM, and that was why we facilitated on that day. Also, because many of those players are parents, and they want to be able, they don't want to take any other time away from their family when they're, those days that they're gonna be at work or late. But we require nothing to happen on a Wednesday or a Sunday, and we actually discourage practices from occurring on Wednesdays. Sometimes coaches and parents and family members get together and do those things. But, but our commitment, sir, is to make sure that God and family are first, and we push those out at the very front.
And there are no games on Sunday and Wednesday.
That's correct, sir. We plan no games. But again, if a coach sets something up as far as a practice, sir, all we do is discourage it, we don't ban it.
That's right.
Exactly. Thank you, sir, for your-
Yes, sir. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
I'm seeing the water system, the projects.
I'll be brief on these. You've got the list in front of you. I will update that on Phase One of the Nevo Water System Expansion. We received the permit for authorization to construct on that in the last week. The last thing we're waiting on is an encroachment agreement from NC DOT, and hopefully, we'll have that within the next week or so. But with all that in hand, we should be able to go to bid on Phase One of the Nevo System in January. So it's been a long time coming, about a year.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Let's move on to new business, item A, administrative items.
Thank you. Before we get to what's on your paper, I'll mention the two things we added. Last month, you had the representatives from the Old Fort 150th anniversary. And so you asked to have that back on the agenda. I did find out in the interim that the town is supporting that program, as you can see via the memo, at a $4,000 level. The McDowell Chamber is doing $2,500, because I know there's interest in what others are providing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we go ahead and approve $2,500 to match what the Chamber's doing. Here again, the town of Old Fort, that is, that is in their neighborhood. They need to bear the bulk of the responsibility, in my opinion.
Second. Motion second, and your discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed.
Thank you. The other item, the city sent a request, Mr. Boye, that they're asking for the county and the town to essentially join in a letter to NC DOT requesting that the division look at additional measures to prevent wrong-way traffic on the interstate, and perhaps also the bypass. And so I think they're just looking for a commitment to sign a letter.
I'll make a motion for the, I'll make a motion to endorse the letter.
Second. Motion and second, discussion. I would like for it to be mentioned to them as well, that they need to, I think they need to take a look at maybe a ramp, ramp at Nick's Creek. You know, that would take a lot of pressure off of Sugar Hill.
Yes, it would.
If there was a ramp at Nick's Creek.
Been needed for years.
Been needing it for years, but I would like-
It was on a plan years ago.
Ask that that be mentioned in the letter.
Sure.
Okay. Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and opposed.
Thank you. And then the three items you had listed, EMS write-offs, there's a resolution for a firearm advantage for Deputy Lidle, and Freedom Life has requested a donation of one of our old transit vans.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approved the EMS write-offs. We approved the resolution for the sale of a firearm to a retiring deputy, and that we approved the donation of a old transit van that's no longer in operation to Freedom Life.
Second. Motion second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. All right, Mr. Wood. You opposed? All right, Mr. Wood, next on you.
That's all I have for admin items.
Let's go to item B, the board appointments. Do you have anything, Madam Clerk?
Yeah, the first thing that I do want to say is this is the second reading for the Transportation Advisory Board. There are four seats that are expiring this month and those are Brenda Vaughn, Barbara Norton, Donna Ledbetter, Amy Stevens and Joyce Poplin. They have all applied to serve on the board and re-up and so all you would need to do is vote that they continue their term.
I support that. I make a motion to support it.
Second.
Discussion. So there's, there's four seats and you've got one to. You've got five people applying?
Yes, so there's actually more than four seats. The four seats are expiring, but Brenda Vaughn added an application in to serve on that board. I don't know-
Is it at large?
Yes. Yeah. I messaged whoever is in charge of the Transportation Advisory Board to double-check and they said that it was fine that she applied and be approved if that's what you so choose. And then this is-
We've got a motion and second on the floor. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Okay.
Okay. And then this is the second reading for the Library Board of Trustees, which has one vacancy. Brenda Vaughn also applied to serve on that board, so you would just have to vote if you would want her on that.
I'll make a motion that we approve Brenda Vaughn to serve on the Library Board Trustees. This is a second reading, so we're good to vote. She's only applied.
Okay.
Motion and a second.
And then the other that you-
Hold up. We should go to-
Oh, sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Okay.
Sorry. And then the only other thing I had on the board appointments was when Commissioner Vaughn was on the board, she served on several committees and so each of you would need to decide who wants to serve on which committee.
Mr. Chairman, my committee load is, I've got a full plate, so I would defer to any other commissioner for who would want to be on any of these other boards.
I would like to serve on Connect McDowell in her place.
Okay.
What are the others?
I've got them. I will pass them out.
Mr. Green is available to serve on some committees, I think. My plate is full.
Thanks a lot.
Foothills Regional Commission of Board of Directors. That needs one. Am I correct?
Yes.
Foothills Rural Planning Organization?
Also, too, there's, there's one more we need to add to this. The, actually, the group I'm on with the Trails, the-
Friends of Fontana Forest State Trail.
Yeah, the Friends of Fontana Forest State Trail. I'm not, I'm not able to go to that meeting at the time they have it. So, an evening, so that's another one, too, that needs to be thrown in here.
What meeting, what night is that?
They meet once a month and it's-
Believe it's Thursday?
I think it is. Just, they requested that you serve on that board.
What time is it?
Usually got seven o'clock, six o'clock.
I'll make, I'll make a commitment in the next thirty days.
I'll tell Bob to give you a call.
Yeah.
Can I, can I commit to the Foothills Regional Commission, Foothills Rural Planning? Tourism Development?
I can commit to Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
That'd be a good one to use.
It takes care of all of them, doesn't it?
Yep. Transportation Advisory Board.
And I have a scheduled conflict with the Transportation Advisory Board.
Second, Tuesday. I can't take that because I have school that night.
I'll do it. Okay.
All right. It takes care of that? All right.
Would you mind a vote on all those just for the record?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve Commissioner Green to be on the Foothills Regional Commission Board Directors, the Foothills Rural Planning Organization, the Transportation Advisory Board, Tourism Development Authority and Connect McDowell and that-
I'm gonna, I'd like to be on Connect McDowell, if that's okay.
Yeah. He, you had already said, he had already said that.
Okay. So, and Patrick to be on the Connect McDowell and Chris to be on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
We did not vote on Fontana Forest.
You were gonna check on the schedule.
I gotta check because I-
Okay. Mr. Wood, Tax Matters.
These are all routine releases, rebills and refunds.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the tax matters as presented.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Thank you. Go now to Citizen Comments. Is there anyone here tonight that wishes to speak on behalf of Citizen Comment?
No one signed up.
Our board attorney states nobody's signed up.
No one signed up. Okay.
He kicked them out.
Moving on. Commissioner's staff and reports. Anything from Commissioner's staff?
Traditionally, you've made Christmas greetings.
We do. We have a special treat tonight for those of you that are watching. As always, we read the Christmas story. Barry McPeter's read it for many years and so Mr. Commissioner Allison's gonna read it for us tonight. So we give him the floor to read the Christmas story.
We'll be in Luke Chapter Two, Verse One. "And it came to pass in those days that there went out a decree from Caesar Augustus that all the world should be taxed. And this taxing was first made when Serenius was governor of Syria, and all went to be taxed, everyone into his own city. And Joseph also went up from Galilee out of the city of Nazareth into Judea unto the city of David, which is called Bethlehem, because he was of the house and lineage of David, to be taxed with Mary, his espoused wife, being great with child. And so it was that while they were there, the days were accomplished that she should be delivered. And she brought forth her firstborn son and wrapped him in swaddling clothes and laid him in a manger, because there was no room for them in the inn. And there were in the same country shepherds abiding in the field, keeping watch over their flock by night. And lo, the angel of the Lord came upon them, and the glory of the Lord shone round about them, and they were sore afraid. And the angel said unto them, fear not, for behold, I bring you good tidings of great joy, which shall be to all people. For unto you is born this day in the city of David a Savior, which is Christ the Lord. And this shall be a sign unto you: ye shall find the babe wrapped in swaddling clothes lying in a manger. And suddenly there was with the angel a multitude of the heavenly hosts praising God and saying, 'Glory to God in the highest, and on earth peace, goodwill toward men.' And it came to pass, as the angels were gone away from them into heaven, the shepherds said one to another, 'Let us now go even unto Bethlehem and see this thing which has come to pass, which the Lord hath made known unto us.' And they came with haste and found Mary and Joseph and the babe lying in a manger. And when they had seen it, they made known abroad the saying which was told them concerning this child. And all they that heard it wondered at those things which were told them by the shepherds. But Mary kept all these things and pondered them in her heart."
Thank you, Mr. Allison. At this time, commissioners would like to extend their Christmas greetings to, I would like to go ahead and say on behalf of myself and my wife Dawn that we certainly wish all of you out there a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and we, we, you know, appreciate our health and our strength that we've had for this past year and we thank God for that. We thank God for Christmas and we thank, we thank our Father for allowing us to be able to still celebrate Christmas and feel the Christmas spirit. And it's a wonderful thing and, but we just want to say we thank you. We thank the public, we thank citizens of McDowell County for giving us the opportunity to serve and we wish you all a very Merry Christmas.
I would like to say, my youngest daughter is eight and every year at Christmas, when people start putting the lights out in the yard, we'll drive by and if someone has a lot of lights in the yard, my youngest daughter says, "Daddy, they got the Christmas spirit. They got the spirit," you know, just jokes around and everything. But I do want to say that on behalf of my wife and my three daughters, that I want to wish everyone out there a very Merry Christmas and it's an honor to be able to celebrate Christmas once again. And I thank God for his many blessings. Number one, we've been blessed as a nation tremendously and that's because of the favor of the Lord. I mean, say what you want to. God has blessed America in a great and mighty way and I'm proud to be an American, I'm proud to be a Christian and I'm proud to live in McDowell County. And I just want to say that everybody out there, you are important and you're so important that Jesus sent His Son to die, but He had to be born first and that's what Christmas is all about. It's the time we celebrate the birth of a Savior and if He's not your Savior, it's our prayer that you get to know Him because He loves you tremendously.
For my wife Savannah and my family, we just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and thank you for the opportunity to serve you. We just pray that you and your family have a wonderful Christmas and a wonderful New Years and look forward to serving this next year.
I'd just like to say from Lisa and myself, it's an honor to live here in the county and it's an honor to serve the people of McDowell County. It is a blessing that I have what I have and that we have what we have. I do agree that our county, this is a very special place and I do want to encourage people, I do believe that Christmas is about the sun. And I do want to encourage people, I think it's about forty-three percent of people in this county do not attend church regularly, but when I'm hungry, I go eat and I do try to go to church to be fed spiritually. And I want to encourage people to go find a church so that they can be fed spiritually.
The first thing I'd like to say this evening is to the board, to the rest of the men sitting here, it is an honor, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart, to be sitting with you again. Everybody that has said anything about congratulations or whatever, I've told them that the Lord gets all the credit for that. This past year, He has blessed our family beyond measure and I won't go into all the personal things that He has blessed us with, but to the citizens of McDowell County, it is an honor to serve you. I've served this county in some form or another since nineteen ninety-six and I don't take that service lightly. And I have come into the board this time with even a more determination to serve better. And it's my desire that each and every one, under the sound of my voice tonight, that might be listening, can find faith in the babe that was born in Bethlehem, because it's because of that birth that I could have my rebirth. And we just want to say Merry Christmas to everyone of you.
Okay. In that, Mr. Wood?
It is a special time of year and we never want to forget about the employees that are working here and you've all said that in your comments. We're very blessed to have very hard-working employees that give their all, day in and day out, for the folks that live in this county, the folks that are passing through day-to-day. And so appreciate every day what they do, hope they find peace at this time of year and maybe some rest here and there when they can. But I really appreciate this board, personally, the support you provide for me and as well as the full-time and part-time staff we have. You're, you're a great support to them and to me and I would just appreciate that very much this time of year.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you like to say anything?
Just Merry Christmas and I'm very grateful to be here.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.